May 10, 6:00 PM. If you would all, actually, we'll do real call first. Ricardo?
Aye.
Crystal? Heidi?
Hi, here.
Jason, is Jason online?
Here.
Thanks, Jason. Bill?
Here.
Christie?
Here.
And Chair is here, yep, Forum. So if you would all join me in closing remarks.
I don't need to just comply I of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like to thank our audience members for joining us and for our board members for joining us. It's a busy time of year and I do appreciate everybody being engaged. With that, we'll move on to approval of an agenda. I would entertain a motion to do just that.
I'll move to accept the agenda as presented.
I have a motion and a second. The second goes for Ricardo. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Ricardo?
Aye.
Heidi?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Christie?
Aye.
Chair votes four.
Oh, did you say Crystal?
I did not know. Is she online?
No, I think she's in the hallway.
Okay. So that motion carries. So the agenda is as presented. With that, we'll move on to section two, which is Board Communication. And I have a message that I would like to... Say. Screen to work here.
It's up here, please.
Dear North Marion School District family, on behalf of myself, the North Marion School District Board, and the School District Administrators, we are grateful for all of our staff. We respect the courage and resourcefulness that you have demonstrated during this terrible pandemic. Cleansing surfaces to keep our schools safe, adjusting to remote and hybrid schedules, offering our students the meals and services that they need now more than ever, and serving our wider community to fight against the impact of COVID-19. We would like to ask everyone to consider taking a moment to express your gratitude for the caring support and support you receive from each other during Staff Appreciation Week. Show your gratitude to a coworker or friend, or give yourself a pat on the back for taking care of you. You all continue to contribute so much to our community and in such hard times, and your care and compassion is present everywhere. Thank you again to each and every staff member, sincerely, Dujirinder, Chair Holm, Vice Chair Grub, and the entire board. So I would like to honor that and as a board, publicly say our appreciation for all of our staffers who have been...
You're here.
Also, in the spirit of inclusion, May is Asian Pacific American Heritage Month. So as a board, we'd like to take this opportunity to honor the contributions that that group has brought to furthering our country, promoting our country, and from an educational standpoint, you know, all the contributions that they've made. And we appreciate that and honor that, that contribution. Item C is OSBA's Virtual School Board Conference. If you have not registered, please probably see Diane, because I'm sure she can help with that process. Go ahead, Heidi.
I'm sorry. Is that something that Diane will, I'm sure she always does, but she'll
If you feel...
communicate that to new board members and...
Oh, yeah. So if there's interest, please don't hesitate to reach out to Diane directly and tell her you'd like to be included in that. So you...
And she will, well, I will register until next one day. But it's a little different format, but double check the format on the OSBA website and make sure that you've been meet the times and that you want to attend. It's a virtual conference, though.
Is, is it, it's all virtual? So it's all on Zoom, whatever?
Correct. But the times are split around, so it's multi-day, but it's very short times a day. Just double check on the Zoom. If you go to the OSBA dot org and then go to events, and then hit that event, and it'll show you the schedule. So that you can see. Even if you can do a partial time, it's worth it, in my opinion.
I was gonna say, this is, this is important. It's really good for best practices. It's really good for, you know, to see what other boards are doing and how they're dealing with issues. And I would highly encourage it. When we get back to a normal scenario, it's a really good, fun conference, usually held in Bend, and it's worth, I've always felt with, you know, the time and energy to get over there and to, you know, to network as well as, you know, just engage and find out what everybody else is doing statewide.
Also, the November conference is announced, and that it will be limited in attendance, but available to see live stream, and it will be in Salem instead of Portland.
Oh.
That's not back in town. I'm just giving you a heads up.
At the grand or at state?
At the convention center.
The convention center.
Yeah.
Well, thank you. I would note to Diane that Crystal is joining us, just so she can know. Thanks, Diane. Moving along, I don't have anything other on the OSB updates. Do you have anything to add to that? Bill, you've probably been more engaged the last couple of weeks.
I mean, yeah, yeah, yeah. LPC team, they're negotiating for 9.6 billion for the biennium, but the feeling now is that they might put in 9.3. They're currently at 9.1 billion. So that's the state school fund. I can give you a lesson about that later if anybody wants. But 9.3 will be difficult for some of the bigger districts. Helpful, but not, not great for us. Yeah, so...
What's our number to be fully funded?
9.6, according to COSA OSBA, right? To keep things, what we call current service law, the CSL. So, yeah. And of course, there's federal money coming in, so there's this whole argument with the legislator, you know, and the problem with that, from my personal point of view, just to you guys, is that if they take into account the federal money and short change to state school fund, then in two years, when we do this again, we'll be asking for like a 15% increase because we got negative increase here, and then there'll be a huge fight. You know, the point of the federal money was to fix the things that COVID caused, not to sort plan, right? So this is the fight. So know that that's there. There's a class size bill and a diversity teacher layoffs bill that are the two hot topics right now. And then there's like 467 other bills in there doing their, of lesser loudness.
Cool. Thanks, Bill. Appreciate it. Moving along, item E on section two, sped report for 2019-2020. And that will be presented by Patrick McCarthy.
Good evening, everyone. These numbers represent the student data from the last school year, so the 1920 school year. This is a school year that we started out in March, in COVID era. So the first part I noticed, if you look under English Language Arts and Mathematics, they have all the suppressed. The state tests were not taken that year. That's why those numbers are suppressed. They didn't happen last year. So some important things, if you look over to the left side, we have 293 students on one particular day. We usually average about 300 students. Give or take six or seven, up or below, depends on move-ins. We stayed pretty consistent at that for the last two or three years. Some of the things we look at still on the left side, we look at the percentages of kids that are inside the regular classroom, and the state target is 75, and we're very close to that. Move down just a little bit, please. There you go. Thanks. It also shows that we have kids that have placed inside a regular class, less than 40% of the day. So that means about 60% of the day would be in restricted classroom, like a foundation's classroom. The state target is 10% for less, and we're at about 15. So we're a little bit over that. That's about seven kids total, maybe, in our numbers. They talk about a separate setting, or the state goal is 1.8, and then we're at 1.37. That was where we would send a student out to pick a replacement, like to a psych facility or to another school district that had a program. We don't, we have very few in our program. We do that, so... Look at the eligibility timeline. We're expected to determine whether a student is eligible for special education within 60 days of when we started the evaluation. And so we have two that stood out for us last year, so percentage-wise, we're at 92%, and we need to be at 100, so working on that. Last year, we had a parent survey, and that's a parent who said they... It's the reporting size, sorry. It's a percent of people that sent in their information in. And we don't know about the secondary transition. I asked today with the state why that was a zero, because we have lots of kids turned 16 years or older, and they hadn't figured that out yet. So I'll have to get back to you on that, because every student 16-year-old, we start doing transition goals for post-high school. So on every year, so it should be a significant number of our kids. Any questions so far? We've got a page two down below, please. Thank you. Some, thanks. That works great. Thanks, Diane. So the one thing that is really important in special education is to make sure that we are not at a discrepancy in our findings. The example would be if half of our kids were boys and half of our kids were girls, and we were suspending 60% of the boys and 40% of the girls. Well, that would be a discrepancy. So that also applies to nationality and race, so, and language speaking. Every one of those, all those are looked at by the state. And so the good news is they have, we are no significant discrepancy. Means that we are providing services at the same percentage point that the population has. So that's always a good thing. We never want to be disproportionate. We even look at that on suspensions and expulsions by sex and race and ethnicity. So all those are together. It's important. You can see with our four-year cohort graduation, we're at a little bit below, about 15%, 20%, and then our five-year cohort graduation rate's a little higher. It's interesting to see the high school dropout rate. So this is among our sped kids. It's about a percent and a half more. We never want to drop out. So last year was a tough year everywhere. So those are, those are reported every year with every district in the state, and those are our numbers for this year. Any thoughts or questions? If you have questions later on, you can always email me or call me.
Do you have comments and questions? Thank you, Patrick. Much appreciated.
Bet. Thank you for your service.
I think it's a good sign that there's no disproportionate representation. That's a very positive move.
All right, moving on to section three, consent agenda. I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. That's a motion by Crystal and a second by Bill. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll go to a vote. Ricardo?
Aye.
Crystal?
Aye.
Heidi?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Christie?
Aye.
Chair votes four. Motion carries. We move on to section four, our Business Bond and Budget Appropriations Report. And Linda, are you ready?
I am. Yes. I'm sure you guys had a chance to review the spreadsheet. We are close to having our final numbers for May payment, which includes last year, 2021's payment, the final payment for, excuse me, this year, but the final payment for 1920. And those numbers keep fluctuating. You can see I reported one thing in April and we got a different number in May. So we're gonna see where it lands. That payment is due to us on the 15th, which is Friday. That's about it. Any questions? Bond work continues, but there's very little going on. We're about ready to release retention on the primary, intermediate, and middle school project, but we have a couple little things we want to make sure are covered before we do. So next month, you'll probably see a big increase in payments expenses for that group of funding.
Hey, Linda, Bill, the S R 2 money, is that due when? Is that, when is that coming in?
The S R 2 money, it's available now to claim. We've been spending some of it and continue to spend. So we'll see how that goes.
Can you explain what that is?
Oh, that's the emergency to, we need that. The federal government money for the, there was a first round, right at the end of last year, and then the second round that they just passed a monthly, so it's all...
ESR.
Yeah.
Did they mandate where that needed to be spent?
The Fed's did, yes.
There's a category.
Yes.
Can we have a report on that, then?
You can see where money's going out in my other spreadsheet for other funds. And we will summarize towards the end of the year when we know more. There's been a few changes in what we were gonna spend it on and what we did spend it on. If you guys are ready for the PERS UAL information, are we ready to move on?
Well, I mean, did we answer if we could have it broken down what we're spending that money on?
Yeah, I said I would get you one at the end of the year.
Fiscal, you mean like June or like December? I would get confused to be end of the year.
The fiscal year ends in June, so sometime in June, when I know a little more, I would make a report. I do have to, or I ask for the money, I have to tell the state where I'm spending it at.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Linda.
Yep.
So if no other questions, go ahead, Linda, and move on to your next item then, too.
Okay. So I brought this to you back in March. It's whether or not we want to join the pool of districts that are gonna do a PERS UAL bonding. We did this back in 2003, and we've saved millions for our taxpayers. So, well, actually, for our school district. It's a nut, it's a way to take whatever our unfunded liability is. And that, when I wrote this, it was 14. It was just at 14, but they believe it might be closer to 15. So I put over 14. I did a little revision on this. So they revised their assessment, Echo Northwest revised it to add another 5.5 for true interest cost, because interest rates are going up in the market. So our resolution, which will come next, we've said we don't want to go to 5.5. That leaves your prob, brings your probability of having a savings down to 67%. Whereas if you're at 4.5, it's at 80%. I'm just not comfortable with it being at 5.5. There have been a couple districts way back, about when the market crashed, who lost money on this, on this, on a bond pool. So I'm hesitant to go to the 5.5. I would take any thoughts or direction from you guys. But the recommendation from Ginger and I is that we approve, after you've reviewed what we have, that you approve this and leave that recommend, noting that section two calls out that our T I C will not be more than 4.5 per annum. They said, the last time I talked about it a week ago, it was 4.05. So they still think we'll make it, but you know how the market can fluctuate so quickly. It's just work we're gonna try to do, and if it doesn't work out, we won't do it. They're still at the 4.5, they're estimating we would save, I believe it was over $6 million for North Marion. Any questions on that?
I support you, Linda, in 4.5. I agree with you that I would be hesitant to do the five and above.
Yeah, I just don't feel right about it.
Linda, did Carol have an opinion on that?
She can't really give us an opinion opinion, but she hedged towards the comfortableness of up to 4.5.
I agree. Okay, understood. Thanks.
So if you guys would like, the next thing is a resolution, and you would just maybe, it's really, really long, so maybe just support the thought that you would yes or no on the resolution. Attached to the end of this resolution is the Echo Northwest assessment.
If allowed by Chair, I'd like to make a motion on the resolution by just reading by title only. Sure, hey? So I make a motion that the Board approved Resolution Number, what was that? 5102021C O C. The Resolution of the Board of Directors of North Marion School District Number 15, Marion County, Oregon, authorizing participation in the Oregon Education District Pension Bond Program, authorizing a full faith and credit pension bond and related full faith and credit pension obligations to be issued in one or more series as presented.
Do we need to add the 4.5% cap?
That's what I was in the recommendations.
Is it? Okay. Sorry, just checking.
So I have a motion, but your second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there more discussion? Jason, are you good?
Yep, I'm good. Thanks.
So with that, I will go ahead and do a vote. In support of this resolution, Ricardo?
Aye.
Crystal?
Aye.
Heidi?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Christie?
Aye.
Chair votes four. Motion carries. Thank you. And thank you, Linda. Moving on to WADSD Elections, Section Two. Do you have anything to say, Ms.?
No. Just for, for the new board members, and people may not have seen this report or are watching the livestream. The WESD populates its board having representations from different regions, and every year, the board is asked to vote on people that have come forward and asked to run for that role position from those particular areas. Sometimes there's contested positions, sometimes not. And this year, from our region, we were asked to select Linda Reeves, who happens to have been a superintendent here in the past, is currently a board member at Lindell Wiggles Schools. This is just how they populate their board.
And Linda's a re-up, she's a support member of the zone, but she re-upped it here, she's being promoted.
So we can go into both in a motions.
Okay.
So with that, I would entertain a motion.
I'll move that we support Linda Reeves for the WESD done to position.
Ricardo, second unit?
Sorry?
Didn't hear that?
Ricardo, second unit.
So we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing that, we'll move to a vote on that. This is in support of Linda Reeves. Ricardo?
Aye.
Crystal?
Aye.
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Christie?
Aye.
Chair votes four. Motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to our third reading of IK F B. Is there some discussion on this? This was a language you had proposed, correct, Christie?
Yep.
Do you want, have any more to speak to it, or?
No, I don't think so. I mean, I'm pretty happy with it.
Does anybody else have discussion?
Your name will live in policy.
I mean, that part of you. Yeah, I mean, that comes out of those words, right?
And Diane is excellent at presenting the information as it formally must be presented in a board meeting before creating a final version. So because of the history of our work on this policy, she shows the each month's new revision. What else do...
So I do have a question. Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
So at the bottom where the dark gray is, is that new? Is that struck? What is, where it says a student may be not denied participation? Diane, would you like to answer that?
Yeah, thank you. Actually, that language has still been on there for all three readings. And it's a notation, it's a footnote for, if you move back up the document. I think a little bit farther up. No, all students in good standing, right here. Correct. So it's just a notation, and so when I submit it for to OSBA to put on our website, that highlighting will be removed.
And what about the note two? Number two?
Number two is down.
Can I, can I ask another question?
No, go for it.
So is number, that footnote number one, is that new? Was that in our policy before?
It's been on all three.
But I didn't like that. But I guess what I'm saying, was it?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Well, not, maybe not stated that way, but I have seen it here, and it's in the handbook as well.
So to follow up on Heidi, is, was that in our prior policy regarding graduation, is what she's asking? Not if it's in this version?
Yeah, thanks. I believe it is, but let me find it.
Because I can see where you're going with that, Heidi, and I agree that we need to, there's been an area of contention that we need to make sure is clear. So when it says a student may be denied participation, it doesn't say who makes that decision or if there is an appeal process for that decision.
Correct.
So can we take that piece out? I'm sorry to bring it up so late, but it's just coming to my attention. I didn't think about it before, so...
Is that addressed in the handbook?
Maybe you have a field process.
Do we?
Yeah, a general field process.
Yes. Typically happens after graduation. Because of the timing of? Yeah. And how it rolls out? So is that, I mean, do we know?
Wait, wait.
Do we know if that's in our handbook?
Yeah, I know that.
Is it in the high school handbook? Is that what you're referring to?
And I believe it's also in policy, but not in different way. It's under the definition of a student initiative. So I'll need to find that. I don't know that it's exactly in this one, but I need to look it up. I can't do it right now. Okay.
Heidi, I think we could, not to sideline you, but I think we can make an addendum to this policy to get it approved in time for graduation, if we just remove that footing, and we can address that in a different policy, if it's in somewhere else or in the handbook. I don't really feel comfortable... Or in the handbook. I don't really feel comfortable as well having that written in this policy. Um, I, yeah, I want to get this done tonight. I guess what I'm saying is. We can always go back and look at policy. I don't think there's ever, there's no limit on how often we can look at policies, correct? Well, we can even strike that piece from there. Actually, I'll just make a motion on. Uh, I make a motion that we accept IKFB with the elimination of the footnote one.
And the rephrase of that.
Yes, and the rephrase of per Director Buckland, with her information being in there. I'll second that again, that, that. Do we have discussion on that now?
Absolutely. I have a motion and a second, so go ahead and, and if there's discussion.
Okay. I understand that it's important to be able to hold people accountable and to not, you know, I mean, certainly if there's something that's happened. Is that ability to deny somebody participation in graduation for conduct, is that? Is that addressed anywhere else? Meaning like, if a student's expelled for, you know, bringing a gun to school or something? Is there another way, if it's not in this policy, is it, is it covered under other disciplinary policies that we have?
Well, it could, but with this particular policy saying that it doesn't matter. It, someone could argue that, well, yeah, I did do that. And then cause a huge ruckus, but according to your graduation policy, you still have to let them graduate. You still have to let them off. So that's the other side of that, I mean, this.
I feel like we need a different policy dictating how that chain of command is gonna happen, given our past records.
I think that's an AR, just supportive policy.
Yes.
Rather than a policy.
So.
We did this last time, we were talking about. Where an item of cultural significance and that will kind of be the way. To make sure that decisions were made in a reliable, predictable fashion, consistent across the board, so.
That would be, that would be a very similar.
Process. It would be. An administrative board that helps define the process for. Engaging in, like, the cultural dress. But who gets to determine what cultural dress is? How do you feel about that? How do you continue that process and not say, okay, we have a policy, we have a policy that's in use? Doing that every year prior to graduation. To make sure that different groups that come in and they have different, I mean, there's all sorts of things that you could do with an AR. And then the same thing could be the definition of a student in good standing.
Right.
You know, and then the same kind of thing.
And that's what I, that's what I would rather see.
A test, a call, you know, a litmus test.
Yeah.
To make sure that, one. That you're looking at the policies as a whole, that you're not accidentally violating another policy. That. Says you have to do the opposite. So that's what I have to check, is there, policies can say these things, and one can contradict the other one, and you're in trouble. So I would work with OSBA, and Diane will help me. And we will check off that we've covered. The board from claims that they're violating your own policies. At the same time, it'll all be an administrative reg that will support the process to make sure it's fair.
Yeah, because we don't even really have any guidance regarding the kind of conduct provisions. That's just random. I haven't actually read any of those. So if we do want to approve this policy tonight, we really need to either have all the information provided. Or we need to be able to strike that and have you come back with an AR, in my opinion.
Well, it's gonna take time to develop.
Yeah, but. It's right there in that other portion of it, so.
So the other way to read that is that's, that's not a directive. It says may be denied.
Correct.
Right? So we're not actually tying anybody's hands that they.
Well.
Not be admitted at that point.
I'm not at liberty to discuss anything from an executive session, but I can tell you there has been people in the past that have been denied participation.
Diane, do you have any, any historical data to provide on this? You tried to chime in at one point.
Mm-hmm.
I was actually trying to pull up our current policy while you guys were talking. The footnote number one is in our current policy, always has been. I think it's been, suffice to be in our student handbook of what it would look like if a student was denied participation. Um, I think Jeanette, Deanna's on the call, she might be able to speak to that as well. Uh, number two, I feel like that is kind of a new footnote put at the end. Because that is kind of a new statement, you know, new equity statement. So that, um, I can reach back out to OSBA. I think the first place I would look is that OSBA guidance summary that we have looked at before. It's not loaded into this agenda. Uh, but it is something that we can look at and see how they speak to that.
It, uh, item footnote two, if that is in our, if that is adopted tonight, just as is, that is not really policy working.
No.
And not really appropriate, I don't think. Not.
Well, just one more thing, it feels to me like you've kind of resolved that the equity piece where we have added. Christie's suggestion. So if others feel that the footnote number two. We've kind of resolved that, that definitely could be removed.
I would support that.
Okay, so we still have a motion on, on the table to remove part one. I would. Deanna, are you on the call?
Yes, I am.
Uh, in, in removing that part, I'm not sure you're seeing, if you're seeing this live time, but. Is that going to hamstring you in any way? Or in ways it could be. I guess I'm playing dead a little bit. Um, because this has been in our policy, and I, I know it's gone. I, I know it's gone a couple of ways, but I would like your opinion on, on that staying or going.
Well, a couple of things I would like to say about that is. A lot of times, unlike just most recent. A lot of times it had to do with our senior prank that has, that had defaced our school. And we were able to use the graduation as our. Discipline, because usually the senior prank happens after they are done with school. So it, it is a double edged sword. It needs to be clearly defined. Um, I'm looking through our discipline man, manual right now, and our student handbook. And it's not very defined there either. So there's got to be some work done. If that is staying in the policy, we need to clarify it in our student handbook. Does that answer?
Yeah. So that's kind of, this is Heidi, that's kind of where I'm going, is that I don't. I don't feel that graduation commencement exercises should be used as a tool for regulating behavior. I think that that's a separate thing, that's something earned over 12 years, and it's not something that we should use as a tool to administer discipline. I, I would think there'd be other ways that we could do that, other than, I know it's powerful, and I can recognize that, but I guess I'm just, that's kind of where I'm going with this right now. Well, it really goes against our social emotional learning piece. Something you've worked for for 12 years after a bad decision as a teenager to be ripped away from you. That won't need a timeline to have it reestablished. Doesn't seem like the route that I wanted, or most people would like to take. I mean, I'd rather there be a fine, there could be parental involvement, there could be press charges if it damages the school. It seems like there's a lot of other avenues that you can go down with. Hey, you've worked 12 years and we're gonna pull this from now. And you may or may not have enough time to show your side.
I, I would agree with you on that part, Crystal, is the time is too short for the appeal. And that is the biggest piece, and that is the problem that we run into with graduation. And. I just feel like whatever the decision is made, it needs to be very, very clear and transparent.
Yeah, that's fair.
Jason, do you have anything? I can't see if you're raising your hand or not. I just didn't know if you had any comments, and I don't want to exclude you.
I don't. I mean, I, I guess I kind of agree with the group, at least those who echoed the fact that you're. You really don't have any jurisdiction over the kids. I mean, they've physically graduated from a requirement standpoint, and then you're gonna go, oh, well. We're gonna get you, we're gonna take away your graduation, uh, uh, process. But in the end of the day, I mean, they still get their diplomas first, I would know, unless there were some other. Uh, mitigating factors that wouldn't allow them to graduate. So it seems kind of like a slap in the face. If there's requirements, community service, those type of ways to, to make kids. You know, the crime should, or the punishment should fit the crime, and taking away graduation just as a, I got you, uh, seems kind of petty, in my opinion.
Thank you.
This is Christie. I, I do understand where, where that whole discussion is coming from, and I agree it shouldn't be used as a primary punishment tool. I do, however. Feel like this, hopefully has never happened here, that there are instances where something could have happened so egregiously that that should be an option on the table. And I feel like removing this text from here no longer gives the district that option.
That's my worry.
That's what I'm worried about. And so I really think this needs to be remained in the policy as an option. If we take it out as an option, it will not happen. And if you're looking at some really egregious act. You still want that person walking across stage with the rest of our children? I mean, I, I, I think that that is gonna put us in a world of hurt. Um, I think it needs to be resolved with the other administrative tools that we have. And maybe that needs to come back to us so that we can review it and make sure that's in place with the intent that we talked about here, but. I, I, I don't feel good about removing that. I think it really ties in.
I don't feel confident in approving this without something in writing, because of the historical complications and liabilities that it has put our school board in.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second on the table. Go ahead.
Well, we still have the wording, all students in good standing. So if a student has done something so egregious, we would be looking at a suspension or expulsion. For anything criminal or, and that would mean that they couldn't be into the property.
Students already graduated. There's no fault until students officially already graduated. This is just a post.
Yeah, but if they. The students don't graduate. I mean, what, when, when do the students actually, I mean, you said they've already graduated, this is just a post school ceremony? I don't, we're talking within a date. Like, I mean, when are they actually getting their, you know, approval? Because they don't finish their classes until.
Usually the, usually the approval is the Thursday before graduation.
Because it does say all students in good standing. So if you have criteria, what's considered good standing? Then you're free from that issue. The problem here is, is that it's so vague, and it allows one or two people to have the final say with no process of appeal. In order to rectify issues at hand. You just say, damn, you're not graduating. And by the time the appeal goes through, that ceremony's already happened.
I agree.
So, uh, when do they, do they become? Oh, uh, when they're still students, up to what point? With the, like, graduation?
I think you're just saying like the Thursday before, which is like a day or two before the ceremony. Like, that happens like just, you know, Thursday, the graduate on a Friday. I mean, we could postpone this, and they can bring it with an AR. I don't want to.
That, that may, procedurally, that may be the best. We have a policy already in place. Continue with that. I think the spirit of this policy was not that it would be hard and fast enacted for this graduation. I think we talked about that at this last meeting, but it would probably be most likely.
Next year.
For next year, so.
Are they still gonna be allowed this year? Uh, maybe Deanna can answer. Deanna, are they still able this year to wear cultural items of cultural significance? Can they wear their service dress, their, 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 their services uniform? Can they wear? Are we still kind of taking the spirit of this policy that we're talking about now for this graduation?
Um, I've talked about those two items, the, um, the uniforms and the cultural significance for their, what they want to wear, yes.
Okay.
Just, just because, I mean, it's, as long as it goes with their cap and gown, other than the uniform, once they've been through basic. But yes, that I've already talked about what is in this policy to our committee.
We still have a motion and a second, so I either need to withdraw that motion, or, or we need to vote on it, go ahead before.
You do the vote of that, no?
Okay. Okay. Any more discussion? Okay. We'll move to a vote. Ricardo? Crystal?
Aye.
Heidi?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
Bill?
Nay.
Christie?
Nay.
Chair's gonna vote nay. Just because I don't think we have anything in place. I, I really get what you guys are, I, I, I don't want to repeat some of the scenarios we've had, but the only reason. I think we, I think we need to revisit this, maybe.
So can I make a motion then that we postpone IKFB graduation exercises to be presented to us with an AR at a later date?
You understand what's going to happen.
Well, I just want to make sure it comes with an AR.
How do you know that's, I'm, I'm just lost here, I'm sorry. How do you know that's what's gonna happen?
Because that's what we, the board just asked our employees to.
No. Yeah, but it's on our.
But, but you said that's what's gonna happen. I didn't even hear a motion for that yet.
No, it's not a motion thing, is my point.
Well, it's in the board action items, so that's why I thought we needed a motion.
Yeah, we have to adopt this tonight or not.
No, we just, we just did not.
No.
I thought we, I thought we were voting on the item number one to take out that.
Her, her motion. Her motion was to adopt this without the.
Item number one.
And that got voted down.
Oh, okay, I thought that was.
I mean, somebody could make a motion to adopt as is, right, or a different edit.
All right, I misunderstood the motion, I'm sorry.
Otherwise, otherwise, in my opinion, and we could make a motion with, but we've already directed our.
To come with an AR.
To come with.
So even though it's on their board action item, we don't have to say it then?
Well, we, we voted it down, it's come with our action.
Yeah, we voted down the, the adoption.
We voted down this policy.
As it's, as it's been presented to us.
And unless somebody makes another motion.
Yeah, I was gonna say, somebody can make another motion with whatever language they want to. Um, and if it gets a second, we vote on that. But we also, you know, it sounds like we want to do a package. I'm just getting.
Yeah.
I'm getting a sense that we kind of want to do a package with this, rather than, you know, do this as a singular item, if that's what I'm hearing from everybody. And maybe we can revisit this.
Yeah, yeah. I'll look, Deanna and I will work on this and, you know, get other people involved, and we'll help put out administrative work for multiple items that are in here.
And it's kind of in a gray area because the board, and graduation certainly is a board, you know, function to, to honor our seniors, but it's also. Deanna has the latitude as, she's, she's building principle, and so she, you know, she puts this together as well, too, so.
Yes, I would say that this particular time of year is the hardest part of her job.
Yeah.
You know, you know, things happen that you hope never happen. You know, yeah, things happen that uh you hope never happen.
Alrighty, so any other motions on this particular item of business? If not, we'll just um table it and wait for wait for some. All right, moving along to section six, District Operations and their report.
Okay, well, we um, a couple of things. The first thing I wanna do is Jillian, are you there?
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, um.
If you stop sharing.
Can you, yeah, can you share the screen? Um.
You need to, or somebody needs to.
Yeah, would you, oh, let's see, stuck, yeah, there we go. So we can see, there she is. Hi, everyone. This is Jillian Do, we're a communications specialist. What are you, so say hello, introduce yourself.
Hi, everyone. Um my name is Jillian and um I'm the new communications specialist for the North Marion School District. I'm I'm an award-winning reporter with almost two decades of experience in journalism and communications. I went back to graduate school to earn a master of public administration, nonprofit and public management. And I did that while I was working as a communications specialist for the Portland State University College of Ed. Uh so I actually visited here when I was in the College of Ed, and it got me really fired up about the school. It was uh inclusive and impressive and just a great atmosphere. And um upon receiving my masters in June of twenty twenty, I received a fellowship, um which is a a short-term position in which um. Participants work for a government or nonprofit entity, and I was paired with the city of Fairview. Um and I was doing COVID relief and grant administration. So there was some outreach and communications around COVID. And so I'm thrilled to join the North Marion School District. I am currently working on a communications plan, and I will be reaching out to each and every one of you to find out what your hopes and dreams are for the plan. Um and social media and a website update are gonna be a part of that. Um and they'll be incorporated in the plan, and I'm meeting with the Unicode Project Manager Dave Fells tomorrow. To review the website features that will promote news and communications, such as a news feed. That's gonna be this this Tuesday. And so I have added Instagram and Twitter accounts already. We have new accounts, and I am seeking to claim the placeholder site that LinkedIn has set up for the district. So that's the latest update.
And uh what are you be doing? A board presentation or sharing information about the website with the board?
Yeah, um I think for the May seventeenth um meeting, um I should have a little bit more information. They're hoping to have more information about the website as soon as next week. They're still working on uh some of it, but we're gonna be talking this week to find out as much as we can. Um but yeah, it's it's moving along and they're progressing. I think he already has fifty pages done, and he'll be available to add additional pages if we wish.
Awesome. Okay, all right. Well, thank you. Any any questions, Jillian?
Welcome on.
Welcome. I look forward to seeing our new website as soon as possible.
Thank you.
Okay. Um yeah, so we determined today that the grant, the notification to ODE that whether or not we will have a summer program is due today. So we surveyed families. We didn't see much of a response. We surveyed staff. Um and we have enough staff now that um all programs, all schools will be offering a summer program this year. The the middle school is still a little iffy. They don't have a lot of staff, but we think they might be able to pull it off with the staff that has signed up. But uh primary, intermediate and high school will have pretty robust summer programs available for our students that wish to take take advantage of them. So um between that and the student investment account uh update that we're working on. Measure ninety-eight grant refunding update that we're working on. Trying to end the school year, a new ready school safe learn uh update, OHA guidance just came out on Friday that I'm still looking through for some revisions. Uh we have just a handful of kids on waiting lists and people are working on how to get those kids in. Um they were doing work on that today, as a matter of fact. And um yeah, so being up there, depending on that as well. Uh negotiations are going on with both of both associations right now. Linda's worked very hard on the budget, looking for next year. And we're tracking all of the legislative uh proposals that may impact us, either operational or financial next year. So um yeah, so it's been pretty busy.
When um, I know it's a rolling process. When will we have an idea of what the fall will look like?
ODE has announced that they will release their guidance for next year somewhere around mid-July. So realistically, there's a possibility we won't see it until August first. However, the the little door that's opened up is that it looks like there's a way to do five days a week. With uh no COVID limits, but there will still be some some social distancing, but they don't know how much. So that's that's the factor to be determined, but um ODE has said that. Uh and the governor is starting to indicate as well. I think I heard today that July fourth is when. Uh the veil may be lifted from executive orders and then um that should open the door. For us to be able to come back, but there still might be some guidelines we have to follow, but not like this. What about vaccination requirement? None. There's no move for the required anybody to have vaccines, but they're just.
For for COVID, the normal vaccine required instead.
The other ones are still there, but not many.
Don't qualify, so they can't put that requirement in.
Yes.
Okay, so we're, what is our plan? Our plan is definitively on five days a week in the fall, and that's how we're progressing, right?
As long as they don't change things again, and don't have another variant that goes crazy and puts us in a tailspin.
Can I ask a question on summer programs?
Mm-hmm.
Um with the high school level, I I know there's a lot of students who are missing credits.
Hmm.
Um is there a push to reach out to those students from, you know, to try and help recover some of those credits?
Deanne, would you like to speak on this?
Yes, I would love to speak on that. So for the summer school, we're really focusing on our um seniors so they can get their credits earned before August thirtieth. And our freshmen to keep them on track. Um we're also looking at um anybody else that is willing to do summer school. The doors will always be open for them. Um the biggest thing that we're working on is in the fall to go back to five periods a day. And um that way, we can earn some of the credits that we've lost the last year and a quarter. Did that answer your question, Glenn?
It does. Thank you, Deanne. I just um I I know it's, I know it's an issue, and I I at least would like to see us have an opportunity for. You know, to recover some of those, some of those, some of those credits that have been lost, so.
I do have a question on that, Deanne. Are some of those classes gonna be offered online, or is it only in person for the summer school?
Well, remember that we have Gradpoint. Um we just have to make sure that it's the teachers, and that's our online. We just have to make sure that the teachers that are teacher of record are willing to do summer school. Um we also, you know, we have multiple ways to get credit. Um proficiency is one. Um that we could work on coming up with a a practice for these courses to, for them to earn credit. We also have the assurance forms from the last spring. And by offering summer school, they would be able to get that completed before August thirtieth.
And uh the staff that have responded, a few of them asked to do online learning only, but that's not the focus. The focus is face-to-face. And most of them have indicated three to five days a week for up to six weeks for their availability. And um there'll be some instances where um students that need a credit recovery can't come on the campus, so that would be an exception whether we will.
Okay, excellent. How many students are we talking about that have shown interest, or are we going to make connections with family to fill gaps? I'm like trying to get a perspective.
Uh well, we're trying to do that now. We figure once the the staff have committed to running the program and then start promoting it, that there will be more interest.
Okay.
Yeah, so we're we're not done with the promotion pieces yet.
Okay.
And to to follow up with that, if I may, Ginger.
Yeah, please.
Once, once we get our list of kids, for example, our seniors that um will not be graduating on time. We will definitely be reaching out to them in person, by phone calls, home visits, whatever it takes to get them to uh see where their success could be. To be able to get their diploma this year. So um we are trying multiple things since we get our hot list put together. Of how we're gonna reach out and get them involved and making it sound like a positive and not um I have to do this, this is for my best interest.
I have no doubt that you're gonna work relentlessly on that, Deanne.
Thank you.
On the gap, I was thinking more about the large gaps that we've seen that are growing in our NAP and our other portions. Are we gonna try to connect with the?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yes, and that's required to be part of the gap for it.
Okay, I was just making sure that's what we're.
Oh, yes, but uh. The uh the research, research that supports summer learning says that that has to be, there has to be some tutoring.
Right.
But there also has to be some fun engagement activities. So where are we supposed to have people like Sheng Chang, teacher John Jones, you know, gonna go down the list, Annie Yasmin, and all the people. That uh inspire page, you know, inspire kids to do more. Um that can do these types of things. And I know that the intermediate school's been working on deep learning, which is a project-based approach to exploring. Uh a common topic, but to go really, really deep into your own interest in that area. And then bring that back to the the group of other students that you're working with to share out, and then you all get a deep look at that same topic. And it's kid-driven. I mean, it's your interest that drives the learning, not that you have to finish the lecture. I think so it's, it's exciting. They're thinking about STEM and STEAM and art and. Um counselors are wanting to teach social emotional learning to to kids and. And it's gonna be fun and active and like little day camps and STEAM camps and I mean, there's lots of ideas that are bubbling up. And I'm excited about how excited the staff are to do this and the energy that they're bringing to it. So I know that the kids are gonna say, yeah, I wanna go.
As soon as Spring wears that beam shirt, she's gonna have the following.
That's right. That's right. Yeah, so yeah, at all levels. And the high school, I can't tell you how many math teachers in the high school have signed up to do this. I mean, you know.
That's fun.
JR and Remy and Mark Valentine have already said that they're excited to help kids and, you know, that's, they are like that all the time. They're, you know, they're for the kids and. Yeah, other teachers as well are there for the kids. So yeah, so it's gonna be excited. Wade signed up because he wants to do business and all the tutoring and uh and the shame uh for English learners and, you know, it is. It just, the high school is just like popped with all these great things that they all do for kids, so we're grateful for all the stuff in that clean line.
Yeah.
Thanks, Deanne, for taking that on the fly. I I really appreciate it, and and I appreciate our kids getting an opportunity to kind of capture, recapture some of what they. Uh maybe efficient in.
No problem, anytime. It's what I'm excited about.
Yes.
Um I wanna augment in this report here on one item that was important anyways, should be important or is important to all of us, but. Uh Ginger was ex officio, but I'm on the Willamette Budget Committee, and we passed the budget for Willamette. Uh sorry, Willamette ESD, but the most important thing, what you wanna hear here is that we passed the full, the budget includes the full phase one implementation of the Willamette Career Caddy.
Oh, excellent.
Which is something we're participating in. We have more kids of interest than Ginger's work in the last year to get us in the front end of that with our. CTE money is allowing our kids to be part of the first weekend. So that's very important. And we have more kids interested in open seats right now, so. Uh but we did pass the budget for the ESD. You didn't get to vote, but I got the honor of making the motion, so.
Yeah.
So uh so we will have a Willamette Career Caddy, barring a variant of COVID, you know, we will be there and our kids will have first hand. Appreciate.
Yeah, yeah, and it's very exciting that uh. All of the things that I've heard the staff say that they want to bring to school, they wanted to bring the health services first, you know, we want, we wanted to do that. And thinking about how we would have to add subtract, multiply and divide to be able to create that, and then finding the staff and this, that and the other thing. Um and then so hearing that, then hearing our other, our local community people talk about manufacturing, how hard it is for us to find a welding teacher and all these different, you know. What about diesel? There's no diesel going on. And then all of a sudden, we start talking at the ESD about this Willamette Career Caddy, you know, and say, does it have our health services? Does it have diesel tech? Does it have manufacturing? Does it have this? And they said, yeah, we can do all that. And I said, well, that's what our kids want. That's what our administrators are struggling to put together because it's so hard to do it on a local level. And uh it's very, and the kids are like, yeah, yeah, this is great. So it's very exciting. It is very exciting.
The add-on to that is that just in the last two months or so, according to the reports from the administrators, they have well over a hundred thousand dollars in donations. Uh from local businesses. So like Diner, Diner Trucks gave two trucks, two big trucks, and that's worth on. That's well over a hundred thousand dollars just there. Some medical companies gave them a bunch of equipment and the hospitality donations that this is flowing in. So they're they're way in the hundreds of thousands of dollars of local businesses donating to the Career Caddy right now.
That's awesome. Yeah, beautiful.
Very good, your add is.
That's it. All right. Well, yeah, so it's, that's concluded my report.
Thank you. Moving along, each and every business.
Budget workshop.
Yeah. Down to a budget workshop and. Linda.
Yes, um I do believe I have some budget committee members on the call, but I'm not not seeing their names. I think Emily Hammick might be here and. Jay Jones could also be here, and I'm not sure if anyone else made it, but welcome whoever did. So I have this presentation in the packet that went out on Friday, so hopefully you had a chance to look over it a little bit. And um please interrupt me and ask questions as we go if you'd like. Um it looks a lot different than other years because everything we've done in the last year is different, everything. The only thing we all know is that everything was uncertain, so uncertainty is sort of my word right now. Um and the constant changes that we've had. So for our challenges, we have an enrollment challenge right now. We've had declining enrollment at North Marion. And it's not just us, but across the state and the country, a lot of um students chose to do homeschooling and charter schools and are not. No longer on our rolls where we get our state school fund. But from fifteen sixteen to now, we are down two hundred and thirty-three students. With over a hundred of them being lost, a hundred and seven is the number in twenty-one, twenty-two. At nine thousand plus a student, that's over nine hundred thousand dollars, close to, probably is, right, a million dollars of funding that we've lost because of our. Declining enrollment. So our question is, will they return in twenty-one, twenty-two? So Ginger and I have to put this projection together in December, so we guesstimated that half would return. Whether they do or not, we don't know, but that's obviously is putting out our funding. So here's just a little sample of our enrollment. Um in nineteen, in fifteen sixteen, we were at nineteen ninety-two. We're now down, these are October one official enrollment numbers, the seventeen fifty-nines. We've lost that two hundred and thirty-three I spoke about since fifteen sixteen. The other issue we have is our staffing has not lost in that time period, so we still have more staff that we're paying for. We have gained some money through some grant funding, so it's not all coming out of general fund. But when you see the numbers, it does make you pause and wonder if we should be doing something a little bit typically. Our staff has gone up in that same time time period by fifteen point four. Um more challenges. Right now, as Bill mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, the governor's budget is set at nine point one billion for the state school fund. It's only a hundred million dollar increase from last year, which last by end, which was. Um they are gonna fully fund the high. They are gonna fully fund the High School Success Act at 318 million. And then they're fully funding the Investment Act, which if you'll recall, last year, the Student Investment Act, we got about a third of what we could have, what would have been fully funded. I say all this with a little bit of pause because this May revenue forecast comes out on the 19th, and that could change things also. There is federal funding that's coming, SIR and ARP dollars are anticipated. There are, you know, that's one-time funding that we won't see for years down the road. Not, not something I like to use for stacking. So what this means for North Marion is we're down eight to 900 million from last June, our state school fund. Our ending fund balance is up six to 700 million from last June. Or I'm projecting it will be up like that, mostly because we didn't have substitutes. We didn't, we had very few compared to a normal year that didn't cost us. Most of our supplies that we needed the first two thirds of the year were paid for with COVID dollars, the SIR money. So we didn't put out the kind of money that we normally do, which is, I'm grateful for, otherwise I would never be able to balance this budget without making some drastic cuts, either in days or staff or something like that. So luckily we do have that to lean on for this year, but you can't lean on that forever. This Investment Act account for North Marion is approximately $780,000.
Yeah. We'd be, we'd be.
I was like, yeah.
Is, is there a question?
I, I'm, I'm wondering whether in this paragraph or this section, you meant thousand instead of million.
Or the second bullet.
Or the first bullet.
Yes, I do, Bill, it should be.
If we were down 900 million, we'd be, we'd be in jail.
It should be thousand. Looks like I crossed it out just now. So there is.
First bullet as well.
So, so there is talk at this state level of moving the state's school fund to possibly 9.3, and as Bill said earlier, some people have been asking for, and I know there are some districts, bigger districts that have budgeted at 9.6 billion, knowing that they can't spend it unless it comes in that way and they have their plan in place on how they adjust. So 9.3 is what we're shooting for and believe is a possibility. There are a lot of districts that have budgeted at that and that is where I'm budgeting our budget. For every hundred million, so the 9.1 to 9.2 is about 150,000 for us. So it's, it's decent money, but we also have other things going on like negotiations. What we've had to do in order to make things work is shift positions that we normally pay out of the general fund to our student investment account and our High School Success, which is measure 98. So with all of that shifting, we have not had to lay an outset. So here's my assumptions, that the state school fund will come in at 9.3, and that's what I'm basing the budget on. We know that we're in negotiations with both unions and I have on the table with both unions at 9.3, a COLA of 2% and insurance increase of 100% built into the budget. We've had a couple meetings and we will continue to meet. That has not been accepted by either side. My off, the offer that we've put on the table is a step, so at 9.1 it would be this, at 9.2 this, at 9.3 this. So obviously if the funding doesn't materialize, what I, what we have offered would not work either. The SIA funds will cover the language arts adoption because there's no capacity in the general fund. It will also cover some existing positions as I talked earlier because we don't have the capacity in the general fund. SIR funds will cover some Chromebook replacements, again, no capacity in the general fund. And we're really hoping that our enrollment will make a rebound of 50 to 60 students and we will not know that until September. Here's just a, a little look, and I'm sorry, I can't get it to fit all on the page, I don't think. A little look at our funding streams with the dark green line being our funding and this is starting in 1718 through 2122, the expected funding. So you can see that in 1718, 1819, the funding was almost exact and we bumped up a little bit for 1920 and 2021. But we're barely moving for, from 21 to 2122. It's a little bit scary when you look at that in the state school fund and you can see the blue is the measure 98 and the yellow is the SIA. So there, there is money there, but it's, it's not coming in equally to how we're growing. So we spent a lot of time with administrators on staffing this year and how we were gonna staff and where they were gonna be, what funding stream they were gonna keep paid on. But the direction to the administrators was using equity lands to focus on staffing decisions. So we had them look at the district demographics and all of those things that you could see. We had, we divided it into two categories, staffing and the existing positions, anticipated vacancies, the need for replacement, whether or not you thought that you had to have that position. And then new positions with the focus on ELD means, math coaches, those sorts of things, counselors, special education programs and programs support whether it be new or existing. Step two of it was to prioritize moving these, prioritize first of all the staff that you wanted, whether that was a priority one or not, and then looked through our funding and see what, what funding could absorb what positions. And like I said, we had to move several positions from the general fund over to the student investment. So here's a quick summary, and this is a page you're probably used to seeing from years past, of the general fund and what, what we, what I was looking at in March and then towards the end of May, first of, I mean, end of April, first of May, our beginning fund balance, actually thinking it's gonna be around 2.6 million, hoping it's gonna be around 2.6 million, with revenue of about 20.5, giving us 23.1 and then expenses of 22 million with an ending fund balance of 5%. So that leaves us with about $215,000, $215 extra. So that's like as close as you can get to this. I'm sure there'll be a few changes as I complete the building of the budget, but that's about how close that we, that we are with the general. One of the things that we need to report on is our student investment account or SIA funds, and so I just wanted to review some of the issues guys that were on the board, saw this information last year. There were strategies that were put together and we had six of them. These are the strategies that we looked at to spend our money on. From those strategy, strategies, outcomes were decided and we ended up with four outcomes. And outcome one is all students reporting a sense of well-being, self-advantage and safety. And then I've listed things that we're gonna spend our money on in that section. And if they were originally paid for from the general fund, you'll see that note from the general fund. Our second outcome is that every student graduates with college career and employability skills and post-secondary goals. So a lot of this comes out of the High School Success or Measure 98 money, but we are starting an AVID program in the communication special as a piece of the business. All students have access to well-run education, you can see those several items that we're paying for out of there, mostly the hiring of the ELD teachers and some general fund capacity, no capacity, moving a couple of ELD teachers from general fund to the other side. And we're hiring, we had one kindergarten teacher on leave of absence and well out and they were back, so that helps with the small class size and they will also be. Our fourth outcome was about math achievement. Most of this work is probably under Title II funds, we do have, um, and approach paid on that. Title I also. High School Success is another place, the Measure 98, where we're spending money and you can see the positions that were in four outcomes. And I think that's, I will.
I have a question about career. Can you go up to the previous page, sorry? And I'm not sure if this is for you or for Ginger. The college and career coordinator, are we giving college the same amount as trade school, like time? Commitment for both of those, because I wanna make sure we're not just focused on college, but we're also focused on the trade.
Yes.
Okay.
And Willamette Career Academy is a perfect example of that.
Okay, I just wanna make sure that when we're hiring a coordinator, they do both.
Oh, yeah, yeah, as a matter of fact, she was kind of instrumental in beating the drum and giving kids a role and stuff, so, yeah.
When, when you, when it says college and career, that's what they're doing both. And this is an existing position that has been paid out of Measure 98 for two or three years. Anyway, so the next steps is I need to complete the budget document and we'll have our first meeting next Monday for the budget hearing. And then if we need to have a meeting on Thursday. So are there any other questions from anyone or any comments?
Hi Linda, this is Emily Hammack, I have a quick question for you, can you hear me?
I can.
And talking about the enrollment, you know, is that based upon right now, current enrollment, so there's, you know, a handful of kids that opted to, you know, un-enroll and do their own program. I was just curious what the enrollment is based upon, is it like an average over the last few years or is it current enrollment, we're hoping to get 60 to 70 more kids, you know, you think you're factoring that into the number to re-enroll.
So, so when the enrollment spreadsheet that's on the screen right now, when
Yeah.
enrollment number is our official enrollment of October 1st, and those are numbers of students, the actual headcount. And that's how the state starts with funding everybody, is your official enrollment as of October. Ours will.
October 1st.
Yes, October 1st, and ours fluctuates like everybody else's. But
Okay.
we haven't gained hardly any back from last year.
Okay, I was just curious, what, what was like the starting point, so October 1st, that's helpful, thank you.
Anyone else?
Do we know where we're holding next Monday meeting?
It's gonna be the, I don't know, it's like a conference. Jolynn Ash is, is here, and she doesn't have questions, but I just want you to know she's present.
Oh, great, thanks for coming, Jolynn.
I do have a question regarding the baseball part of the budget. That we received an email about baseball and Linda was gonna look into budget for Title IX. Isn't it Title IX?
We haven't, have you had time to finish that, that work, Linda, or is that a part of our next?
I thought that, that Glenn was going to present at the June board meeting, but I, unless that has changed, I am building money into the budget, I'm not building money. We have, if we can pay for any of it, it'll come out of our construction excise tax money. And I always budget to spend all of that, but.
I'm a little confused.
Piece, a spin, a piece of that construction excise tax, it, first it's slated for finishing the roofs if the bond money doesn't have enough money in it, so I can't commit wholeheartedly yet to anything there.
So how did we get baseball upgrades over language arts and general fund?
It is not general fund. There's no, no general fund money to be spent on this.
How are we rectifying the Title IX?
That's a conversation for June, I don't have all of that information.
Yeah, well, I'm a little worried that you're building it into the budget, but we're gonna approve the budget and do the workshops before the final decision is made in June.
Like I said, Crystal, for construction excise tax money, I always budget as if we will spend it all, whether we do or not is a whole nother thing. For instance, we didn't spend any of it yet this year. Now we may, if the roofing starts and I need some that bond won't cover. But it could be that we spend nothing, so I'm doing the same as I always have, I'm budgeting it all, doesn't mean we will spend it.
Why did we go with the cheaper roof to save money if we knew we were gonna have money for baseball repairs?
This is not bond money that I'm, that would, the bond money is not covering anything to do with baseball lights. Bond is completely separate and that was not in the bond money and it cannot pay.
I think I want like a very detailed thing in the budget regarding where and how the priorities are laying, because I'm really concerned that we are making accommodations for sports and not based off of our huge gap of education.
Well, we have covered the next adoption, which is language arts in our student investment account, so that's, that's covered. But the priorities come from all administrators and Ginger. If you want, I think you will see it when it's laid out in the budget and we're only talking about some money for this coming from one fund and it's not construction and it's not the general fund.
So let me give you an example of something I just recently noticed regarding Title IX. In 2016, when my kids were here, there was a state championship won and there was banners and documents and tons of stuff all over this school. The girls soccer just recently won and maybe I missed it, but there's no documents all over this school. So these are the things that I'm concerned about.
Crystal, that is not my wheelhouse, so need to.
That, that's like statutory immigration.
Yeah, I think this is a different conversation rather than budgeting.
But it is Title IX and that's in the budget. How do we, why are we not given the priority list on the budget, we're supposed to sign off on these things?
You'll have an opportunity to review the budget in detail and then you can have that conversation.
All right. Because this is the budget workshop, so I would assume before you build the budget, you'd wanna know where your priorities were.
Well, if you look at staffing and those sorts of things, if you look at the SIA, we had our goals and our priorities set out in that. So review my document again and you'll see and you realize, and I think you'll remember that staffing is 80 to 90% of your budget, so we prioritize needs that way.
For.
I'm sorry, I missed what you said.
How much did baseball ask for?
Ginger, do you have the number, I'd have to look.
Yeah, I think it's.
It may be, we don't know how it will be financed yet, it could be a three to five year thing, it could be a one-time thing. They're still looking at getting funding in from donations. I think, Crystal, you're, I don't, I don't have all of the information, so I think this is more of a Glenn Elliott question.
But I, your point about the Title IX thing is something that we are talking about as part of this proposal. So it's not being created by itself without taking into consideration Title IX application. So that'll be part of a conversation.
Yeah, I'm looking forward to hearing from Glenn on how this is all, and I'm gonna need a number as well.
Are, are you done, Linda?
I am done unless there's other questions.
They don't hear any, so.
Oh, I have a question.
Go ahead, Heidi.
Since the K through 5 did not do their, they weren't, they delayed their social studies adoption for a year. Is that money already allocated to that then?
Heidi, can I speak to this, this is Sheri. I went back to the elementary, knowing that we had some funds that needed to be expended this year and I said, are you sure you do not want to engage? And right now. And right now, I think that they may be engaging. I set up a couple of presentations for them. I will get back to you to know if we're moving forward with the elementary adoption because we'd want you to be part of the process.
Okay, yeah, but I just, I wanted to know if the funding would still be available for that next year for, it was, it was tar, you know, it was budgeted this year, it was delayed, so how that works. I'm not sure when that would come in.
That was coming out of S I A money and we have until September 30th to spend this year's money because we asked for an extension. So hopefully they will make a decision by September 30th.
Are there all questions? Okay, thank you. I'm too excited. The one language. I've been looking at. I think it's part of a larger conversation, honestly.
Okay.
That we probably not be part of the current presentation. But my only question that I didn't clearly get was the development of these, they projected outcomes were based on a assessment, right? At some pre-assessment. Yeah, it was a community assessment about what, two years ago?
I'm talking S I A, yes, I A.
2019. Yeah, where do I get a copy of that?
Oh, okay, you still don't have that.
Yeah. But that is something that.
We'll do that.
Yes. Oh, go ahead.
There's information on S I A on our website still.
But I'll send you the spreadsheet.
Okay, that'd be great, thanks.
Yeah, basically it was a survey of the staff, the community, and parents and students. And then the common factors that popped up between all of the groups became the factors.
Yeah. Yeah, I haven't read that, don't think it.
We also had community meetings. Yeah, they had a meeting, the board participant, too. It all got to.
Thank you, Linda, much appreciated.
You're welcome.
With that, there's no other business to kind of forest. Has there been any other questions, comments? No, we will be adjourned.
And we have a meeting next Monday.
We have a budget meeting.
Yeah.
I was asking where, where.
Okay, Linda?
Budget committee meeting is Monday, the 17th at 6 o'clock. It's not in person because with the committee members, we don't have a large enough place. So it'll be a Zoom meeting.
Yeah, okay, great, all right. Thank you very much.
Yep.